Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 11th meeting of the Millis Planning Board. Before we begin, I'd ask everybody to rise to recite your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda this evening is the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing Proposed By-Law Discussion and Update. With us, we have Jody Garzan, who is the Chair of the MBTA 3A Advisory Committee, and John Cruz, who is the Town's Representative from MAPC and has been working with us throughout this entire process. So, John, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you so much, Nicole, and thank you to the members of the Planning Board, everyone here in attendance today, and those of us watching at home. I understand we have a packed agenda this evening, so please forgive me if I move through my presentation quickly. I'll make sure it's available to the town so it can be online for the public to review later on. As Nicole said, my name is John Cruz. I'm a Senior Housing and Land Use Planner with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and we've been at work trying to get this bylaw and map ready for you guys to have, ready to go for town meeting, and we're going to take you through the process of how we got there. If my computer would work, okay, there we go. So tonight, real quick, we're going to give an overview of the efforts to date. We're going to talk about what the requirements that Millis has to do under the Office of Housing and Livable Communities, talk about the proposed district boundaries, talk about the regulations, AKA the bylaw, and then we'll talk about what comes next. This is the members of our committee who've been working really hard about this for the past couple of years now, and happy to have them dedicating so much more volunteer time than I think they all originally signed up for. Work began in the summer of 2022. There's been three public engagement events, two meetings, and one survey, numerous meetings of the advisory committee to which I think we've all lost count, multiple versions of the different zoning options have been workshopped, talked through, and policies decided on at the committee level. This is not something that was done in a vacuum. There's been tremendous amount of back and forth between the committee, the town, the public, and us at MAPC. The result is this draft bylaw, the draft overlay district boundaries, and the regulations. What Millis has to do has been decided by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. This is a cabinet position under the Governor's Office. Each community has different requirements based on what their quote-unquote "community" type is. So communities that are served directly by rapid transit T-lines, such as the Orange Line and the Green Line, have different requirements from people that are served only by commuter rail, and for people that are in adjacent communities where a neighboring town or city has access to one of these rail lines, they're classified based on what their size of the population is. Millis is considered an adjacent community by the state because the town borders a municipality that has rail access and the population is above that of an adjacent small town, which I believe is 4,000 or 5,000 people, something like that. What the zoning requirements are tailored based on what those classifications are, and then some more specifics based on the actual size of the town. So essentially, what this comes down to is legalizing multifamily buildings and allowing them to be built without the need for a special permit. The zoning district has to be 1.5% of all developable land or 50 acres, whichever is less. In Millis's case, that's going to be 50 acres. The 1.5% of developable land was something like 53, 54 acres. We ran the math on this early on in the process. The gross density has to be at least 15 units per acre, and the zoning must allow for theoretically 750 units to be built under that zoning, and the units can't have any square foot restrictions or any age restrictions. So for instance, you couldn't cap them at 600 square feet to one bedrooms or studios, and they wouldn't allow to be capped for senior housing either. This is designed to be apartments that are suitable, as the state has said, quote, "for families with children." What all this means is that we've decided to create an overlay district that does not replace the existing zoning. It gives property owners two different sets of development rules if they choose to develop or redevelop the land, and there's no requirement that anything actually get built. This is a requirement from the state that says the zoning has to be in place to allow for a theoretical build-out. There are no benchmarks, there are no milestones, there's nothing that says any of these units actually have to get developed. Everything that's going to happen here from on out with the zoning, once it's passed, it's up to the market to see what's actually going to happen. The district boundaries, I can see most of you have these in front of you for everybody in this room, for those at home. This is something that shows the context of the proposed district within the boundary of the town, which you can see in the thick blue line, and the orange district is the multifamily overlay district that's being proposed. Once we zoom in to give a good idea of how this looks, it's essentially the Stony Brook Village Apartments, a handful of properties on Main Street, and then the former GAF site along Curbs Street and Union Street, and another parcel that's on the other side of the train tracks. Because of the way EOHLC has put the regulations together, we have to include that little bit of right-of-way that connects the two of them, so that's why that's there like that, even though, of course, it's a train track. It's not going to get developed anytime soon. It's 55.53 acres, which just gives us a little bit of coverage over the top of what our minimum requirements are, and the list of parcels that are on the plat map are the same as what's in the bylaw. It's just here so that the public can easily see the ones that we're talking about. This does not infringe on any existing single-family homes and is primarily sitting on top of existing apartment buildings. Stony Brook Apartments, I believe, is 202 units and was developed in 1971. The regulations say what would be permitted in this district are attached townhouses and other multifamily. Vertical mixed-use is not permitted. This is something that the committee and MAPC went back and forth on quite a bit, trying to figure out the right thing to do. The last time I came and spoke before you guys, we said that we had a mixed-use district that was in there that has since been removed. We realized that, number one, we didn't need the numbers in that district in order to hit the minimum numbers needed for compliance. Number two, the committee decided that it would just be a whole lot easier if we had one mixed-use district, and if we needed to expand it and cover more ground that way, it would make things a little bit easier for developers and for property owners, instead of saying, "Well, if you want to build here, it's this set of rules, and if you want to build there, it's another set of rules." So where they landed was if the existing MCEOD, which is the current Millis mandatory, or not mandatory, just mixed-use district, wants to be expanded, that should be a separate zoning exercise that everyone takes a look at. The minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. Open space minimum is 20%, maximum lot coverage is 80%, FAR of 2.0, one parking space per dwelling unit minimum, all the setbacks are set to set 10 feet. The maximum building height is at three stories and 40 feet to give people a little bit of an extra cushion there. The minimum lot footage is 40 feet, and the maximum allowed dwelling units per acre is 18. That's a little bit higher than what the requirements are, but when you start taking into account land that the state excludes because it's not developable, it starts pushing that down a little bit. But that hard cap is really what prevents our property owners from doing a whole lot more than what would be intended and having a lot of other adverse effects on the town. After we model all of this stuff, what we end up with is 918 units is a theoretical build-out and a theoretical model density of 17.2 units per acre, both of which a little bit more than what the minimum asks for. These numbers give us a little bit of a comfortable buffer, something that we've seen with other communities, as EOHLC has done their review and issued letters of compliance, is I don't know exactly what they're doing, to be honest with you guys. I don't know if they have a different tool that they're using to calculate these numbers. We get an Excel sheet to download, which I'm sure all of you know Excel has a lot of imperfections to it. So I don't know if they have a different tool at the state's end, or if they're looking at things a little bit differently and calculating them differently. However, the result has been for communities that have received their compliance letter, the modeled units are less than what they thought they were going to be. We've seen as high as 30%. I don't think that we're going to have that here, but having a little bit more units than what is required gives us a little bit of a buffer in case the state says, "Hey, something needed to be done differently," so this way you get to the numbers that you need to. I feel confident that this isn't going to be a huge discrepancy or a huge difference in what's needed, and truthfully, we don't have a whole lot of room to scale back property to get down to exactly that 50 acres. Like I said, we're at 55. If we scale back a little bit more, it doesn't do us a whole lot of good. Next steps in this process. What we hope tonight is that the Planning Board will say, "Yes, we are comfortable moving this forward and having a conversation for a vote at Fall Town Meeting of this year." At some point, the Select Board would like to have their say in it and take a look and see kind of what they think might need to theoretically be changed before giving it the official stamp to move forward. After that happens, we hope to get a preapproval sent to EOHLC. That's something that MAPC will do. We'll package everything up, we'll send it to them and say, "Hey, if there's anything that needs to be flagged here, that needs to be different, that would cause this to not be in compliance, please let us know so we can fix it." They can take up to 90 days to do that, and we would expect them to take the full 90 days, based on how this has gone in other communities. So ideally, we would like to have that feedback back well ahead of time, so if there's adjustments that need to be made prior to town meeting, we can do so. Then, once that's all said and good, we're going to take the zoning to the Fall 2025 Town Meeting, and following its hopeful passage, MAPC will do the work to package everything up and send it to EOHLC, because we need to have the final review package along with a series of just requirements that they want to have. I think there's going to be some clerk stuff, wanting the town meeting votes, all the files have to be set up a certain way and things like that. And then at some point in the near-to-potentially-far-distant future, EOHLC will issue a letter of compliance to the Town of Millis. I don't know when that's going to take. I think they're still issuing letters of compliance for the rapid transit communities who had their deadline of December of last year. So like I said, I understand you guys have a lot going on today. You have a very packed agenda. There's lots of people here waiting for lots of other issues. That's all I have for you for today, and I look forward to your questions and dialogue this evening. Thank you.
Just to clarify on the Town of Millis for our process, today's presentation is just to bring us up to speed. We will then make a determination, if everybody is ready, to send this to Select Board with a recommendation that they actually send it back to us for a public hearing. We can't go straight to a public hearing. It's the Select Board that determines whether or not they feel it's ready. So to begin with, I'm going to open it to the board for any questions, for John or for Jody as our Chair.
Was there any consideration to for parking to a number of bedrooms versus just dwelling units? If you have a three-bedroom apartment, you want one parking space?
So, I'm sorry, that's loud.
Hot mic, Julie.
We wanted to make minimums, but we didn't set it per bedroom in this instance, because it depends on where it's located, if there's shared parking, that type of thing.
Just a question, as I briefly look through this. You have setback, minimum 10 feet. Is there a reason why, how you came up with 10 feet?
10 feet is a standard that we use for a lot of higher-density multifamily for things over 10 units an acre. We're trying to get some urban form, especially along Curbs Street, so that was the idea here, was that there wouldn't just be a big block apartment building, try to do more things to encourage townhouses and buildings that are closer to the road.
So if you have a scenario where you've been, a building is going to be a little bit higher than normal due to grade or whatnot, when you come up with your front stairs to enter that building, you might need more than 10 feet to make those, you know, 14, 13, 14-step rises to meet the code to get into the front landing. So I don't know, I think that unless you turn the stairs and then come up in front of a unit to have access, then you would need both set of stairs on each side. It's kind of, the way I look at it, it looks like you're squeezing it in and giving the developer, you know, really tough situation with the 10-foot. If you went back to 12 feet, maybe, you know, some other consideration that will give the developer a little bit more wiggle room and creating stairs.
Right, can you talk into the mic? Can you bring it down?
All right, I'm not used to this, Ellen. You want to hear me?
Yeah, we can't, we can't hear you.
How's that, better?
Your crew's working, Madeline.
Push it forward.
Call it towards your mic.
Oh.
Yes.
Testing.
Perfect. Start over.
Okay, start over. You have 10-foot minimum setback. So what I'm wondering is why you have the 10-foot and why, and how it's going to be for a developer to create front stairs to get into a complex and give that developer enough room to, you know, if he squeezes it up 10 feet, you're going to have to have two sets of stairs and maybe, you know, have a left and a right approach and a front approach to get to a landing. So I didn't know if you had any, you know, reasoning behind that or how the design or the construction of it would work with that setback.
The design and the construction at this point is all theoretical, so it's challenging for me to speak directly on that. What I can say is that it was designed to have good urban form, and I do believe that setbacks are things that developers could request a variance on if necessary. Is that correct?
They would be able to request it, whether it would...
It's not mandated, they give it to them. They can request a variance, that'll slow the process down.
It would slow the process down a bit, yes. But you feel as though it would be better with 12 or 14-foot setbacks?
12 or 14 would more conducive to a developer building a set of stairs properly.
Okay.
And giving them enough room to do that.
Something we had originally...
Based upon the height of the foundation.
Sure. Something we had originally put in here was minimums and maximums for setbacks, and I forget who it was, I think it was the building inspector told us that we were not...
Me.
Was that you? Okay, somebody told us we were not allowed to do that, so we...
You gotta have a number, yeah.
Yeah, it has to be a solid number.
Yeah.
Okay, so I...
They came up with 10, so that's why I'm questioning.
Okay, so you would be a little bit more comfortable if it was 12 or 14?
I would.
Okay, and that's just for the front setback?
Well, even the rear, because you have to have two ways out.
Okay.
So you're going to have a problem in the back if they're squeezing in as many units as they can and they go right up to the setback. That's going to give them a, possibly, a problem, you know, getting in the landing and the stairs with just that little amount of room.
Right, sure. Yeah, I don't have any issue with that. I don't think that's going to change our modeling numbers at all, if that's something that the Board wants to make an amendment on. I'd be happy to support that. Do you want to read the letter?
Yeah, I'll read this into the, into the record after. Does anybody else on the Board have a question?
I mean, I'm just happy that the Board, oh, sorry that the Board took our suggestions from the last meeting, and I'm happy that, you know, you relooked at it, you listened to the public, so I, you know, I commend you on that.
Okay, so before I open the, open up to public comment or question, I do have a letter from Rich Nichols, who is Planning Board Chair. He unfortunately cannot be here this evening. This letter was addressed to Ellen Rosenfeld, who's the Chair of the Select Board, Mike Gazinski, who is the Town Administrator, Karen Burede Marzo, the Assistant Town Administrator, and Jody Garzan, who is our MBTA 3A Advisory Committee Chair. First of all, I want to thank the Millis MBTA 3A Advisory Committee members for adapting the state-imposed mandate to fit the needs of the Town of Millis. The zones that have been established fit well with the town's existing housing and should offer the opportunity for multifamily larger-density development. This requirement has been imposed arbitrarily by the state on communities who are not directly served by the MBTA and receive limited, if any, benefit from public transportation. There is no guarantee that any of this, quote, "possible new housing," end quote, will end up as affordable, either as below-market rate or more cost-effective due to volume. The state may have just created an opportunity for developers to build more units in closer proximity than would be allowed previously, and no guarantee that this will help the housing needs. Also, the possibility about a burden of school-aged children was not addressed by the state in this mandate. With the number of required units in this mandate, it would completely overwhelm the school system. In my opinion, we should forward the information to the Select Board to present at town meeting with the caveat that if the law is later modified or deemed unlawful or unenforceable, we revert the zoning back to the existing zoning. Thank you. So I will open the meeting up to anyone in the public. If anyone has any questions or comments they would like to make?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kathy McKenna, 78 Island Road. I heard that 750 units are the requirement, and this is for 915 units? So why in the world would anybody increase what the state is requiring, given the situation that the Chair stated about schooling and the density and the fact that it's not even sure yet if this is illegal?
The reason for this is that initially, when we were first looking, actually, I should probably defer to our Chair, to Jody, to answer that, in all fairness.
I think probably John is the answer, because he knows the law better than I do.
Sure, I'll be happy to answer that. As I stated before, we anticipate that EOHLC will come back with a compliance number that is lower than what we have. We think it's going to be much closer to 750 than it is now. What that looks like, I can't tell you, because I don't have a crystal ball, but we do think that's what's going to happen. Another part of that is that it does a lot of, there's a lot of complicated stuff, the way that it calculates the modeled units, and we can only reduce back so far before the numbers kind of jump down. So we could eliminate the cap on what we have for dwelling units per acre, because we have that capped at 18. We could move that down 17, 16, and try to get us close to where we need to be. That could get us a little bit closer. We could remove some of the parcels that we have that would try to get us a little bit closer. Realistically, there's not a whole lot that we can do with the way that the land is shaped the way that it is. So what we see is that this is a good buffer to have in place when all this comes back, and we've also done a lot of research at MAPC around the legalization of multifamily buildings and the effect on school systems. We found that it's not nearly as drastic as people tend to think that it's going to be, and I'd be happy to share that information with you if I could have your contact as well.
Well, you don't really have to share that information, because in this town, housing adds to the school, so whatever you're, but we can agree to disagree. You say you're going to come up with the 915, but the state will probably bring it down. I would stress that the Planning Board should, the first sentence in the bylaw should be that this project is limited to the required 750, and let the state figure it out from there, Madam Chair. Also, it's three stories, and the zoning in Millis, I think, is two stories.
Two and a half.
And here you are, if you don't, what kind of light and air will be 10 feet, maybe 12, if it's only two stairs, but that's unattractive. And you say that you're looking for, it's an urban model. Well, Millis really isn't the urban type of model, and I think, excuse me, I think what's important is that you try to adhere to the zoning requirements as much as you can.
Can you clarify where anybody said urban model?
You mentioned it, and, you know, we can listen back to the tape, but you mentioned that it's urban, urban planning, you called it, more urban planning.
That's the name of the profession. It applies to rural planning and suburban planning as well.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, one parking space per unit, where do the rest of the people go? Will there be overflow parking area required in the bylaw?
There is no overflow parking required in the bylaw. These are things that the developer would work out during the site plan review.
Okay. A lot of times, it's better, as you know, as the Planning Board, to have the laws written, the bylaws written, so that the developers know what, and the building inspector know what's required before the project starts. And also, Madam Chair, is this continued so that this is the first time that a lot of people have seen this, that we, the public can go through this and...
Tonight's presentation was just a, it's just an informative update to the Planning Board, and then based upon the position of the Planning Board, whether or not they choose to recommend to the Select Board that it's ready to go, for the Select Board to bring it back to the Planning Board for a public hearing. But the Select Board has the ability to vote upon that, as you know, regardless of our recommendation at this point.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so the question for the Select, for the Planning Board at this moment would be whether our Board is comfortable making a recommendation to the Select Board that it's ready to go to come back here for public hearing. So I'll present that to all of you. It's not mandatory that we make this motion. If the Select Board reviews this and feels that this is, that they want changes, then they would send it back to, to the Advisory Committee. If this is what the Select Board wants to go forward with, they can vote amongst themselves to send it back to us for public hearing, either way. So it's, that's just an option that we have, if, if this Board felt that it was ready to go to public hearing.
Madam Chair, I see no reason why that we would not recommend that we could send this to the Select Board for them to at least have their say at it and then send it back for a public hearing. This is another committee of fellow Millis residents that have put a lot of time and effort into this. You know, whether we agree with it or not, I think they have their due process, that we should at least allow them to bring it to the Select Board with our, you know, we're not making a vote whether we're voting in favor of it or not.
Correct.
So I see no reason why we would make that recommendation at this time.
Okay. Ellen, did you?
My concern would be with the parking, but if that can be addressed later without slowing the process of the proceeding.
We can, we can make a recommendation that the parking and the setback, as Mike brought up, can, you know, be additionally addressed and then to go forward.
I agree with all these guys.
Okay.
Nicole, I would also recommend, moving forward, that we strike the item under A2 since mandatory, since any mixed-use stuff is no longer part of this. That's something that should have been removed earlier in the process that was an oversight. On the first page, under purpose?
Yep. Yes, that's one of the things we missed. Thank you, John.
Of course.
What I said was that I would recommend that the vote moved to move it forward after striking the item under A2. The purpose of the bylaw, it says to allow property owners greater flexibility in creating mixed-use development. Mixed-use has since been removed from this bylaw, and that point number two should have been removed as well. So point number two should go, number three should be number two.
Great, thanks, John. Okay, anybody like to make a motion?
So moved, I make a motion that we send this to the Select Board for their review to get their comments.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of sending a recommendation to the Select Board for submitting the bylaw to, back to the Planning Board for public hearing, subject to the comments with regards to parking and the setback? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much for your time this evening. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, John, for being as diligent with this Board's time. I appreciate it. Okay. All right, in the next, on the agenda, we have a special permit for with site plan approval, public hearing continued for 121 Norfolk Road. Ellen, if you would like to read that into...
No, it has to be here. It's always here.
I can't see with the glasses, I can't see without them.
We just changed the date on that to today's date.
In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11 of Mass General Laws, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 8:00 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Wireless Edge Towers II LLC, care of Michael Ardo and Esquire. Michael Ardone and Esquire Brown Rudnick LLP, One Financial Center, Boston, Mass. oh-two-one-one-one, requesting a special permit with site plan approval under Sections twelve Q, thirteen C, and N of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Millis for construction of a one hundred fifty-foot above-ground level monopole communications tower and associated appurtenances to be located at one twenty-one Norfolk Road, map thirty-nine, parcel forty-three, Millis, Mass., property owned by Town of Millis. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and can be viewed at millismass.gov/planingboard. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Okay, Attorney Dolan?
Good evening. Michael Dolan from the law firm of Brown Rudnick, here on behalf of the applicant Wireless Edge. At the last meeting, we left with some action items. We were looking into several things, one related to the drainage of the proposed facility, drainage-related issues. GCG had identified some things that they wanted more clarification on. We have since submitted to them several iterations of the plans and received comments with each of those. We've been continued several times as we've worked through that process. Our most recent comment letter from them sounds like we're on the same page. There was one issue about maintaining the stormwater management aspects of the drainage, and my client has since agreed to take on that responsibility. We supplemented that, our last stormwater report with that update, we sent that to Camille. I hope you all received it, I hope GCG received it. So we, we think we're on the same page there and have addressed the issues raised by the town's consultant. There was another issue about the safety radius relating to the tower. We were able to work with the abutter, and she consented to the safety radius encroaching onto her property in the unlikely event of a, of a failure. And then lastly, there was an issue about the proposed landscaping around the facility, specifically relating to what would be more deer-resistant. And we worked on that with some local folks in the know and came up with a proposal. So with that, I think we've addressed everything. If Mike has any additional comments, there was one other thing in the GCG letter that I did want to address. It looked as if it was an open issue about a tower removal bond. We're unique here, unlike a private landowner, tower developer, we have a lease with the town. Our lease requires us to not only remove the tower at the end of our lease term, if the town so desires, but we do have to furnish a removal bond to the town prior to construction. So we already have that requirement in place with the town.
Okay. Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Mike Carter from GCG. Basically, as the attorney indicated, they've addressed all our comments. The last comment has been addressed today, I guess is the best thing, and once they submit the file, the formal one, I haven't seen it yet, I know Camille did send it to me. They would have addressed all the issues in the letter, and again, the bond issue was the last one that I was going to bring up tonight. It sounds like it's taken care of in your lease.
Okay. Do we have verification from the select board or from Mike's office that the bond has been resolved? Okay, and our, and our select board members left. Okay. Has the lease agreement been signed?
Yes.
It has been. Okay, so, I'm assuming? Yeah, we can make that as a condition on this tonight, confirming that, that the bond has been, has been entered into with the select board.
And that is Section three E of the lease signed with the town, says, "Prior to commencing construction of the facility, tenants shall provide landlord with a tower removal bond for the faithful removal of the structure and facility upon termination of the lease in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. The surety on such bond shall be a duly authorized surety company authorized to do business in the Commonwealth."
Okay, so, yeah, so we would just want to condition this to that bond having been paid. Mike, did you have any other comments or?
Only with respect to approval conditions, yes. So we made, in the conditions, we recommended that, one thing that they did is they designed each pad to be a grate system, and the water just flows through. Right now, they're only building one of the, one of the potential six, I think is correct.
That's correct.
And we just make, in the draft, we prepared, there's a condition that says each one should be very similar to that. In other words, don't go put a concrete slab out there, build the same, same type. That's one of the conditions that we put in there, recommended. And then there's another, a couple of other conditions. One is they're going to design the monopole, and correct me if I'm wrong, two, first, they're going to design the foundation, and that will be in the building permit process anyways. And also, I think you indicated that the pole was going to be designed so at seventy feet. If something ever happened, it would get seventy feet.
Correct.
So that's a condition that we put in there, recommend to be in there. Those are the two major conditions related to the site plan review.
Okay. Okay, I'll open it up to the board. Does anybody have any questions? George?
What color is this pole?
Brown.
Could it be green?
It can, but our experience has been that brown looks the best, green seems to stick out more, for whatever reason, even though there could be trees, but our experience has been brown. Dave, if, my client is here, if, if he's, you know. Dave, do you want to introduce yourself and give your thoughts on?
Yeah, David Campbell, Wireless Edge. The color of the pole is Turkish coffee, which is a kind of a brown. In hilly wooded areas, you're not going, you don't want to see a green kind of stick standing in the air. The brown actually will mesh back into the woods a little bit better, and you won't be able to see it. So that's why they're always brown.
Is it aluminum or steel?
It is steel.
It is steel. How often does it get painted, or does it need to be painted?
It'll be painted once, unless there's an issue. It will come out of the fab, painted by the time it gets here, and there'll be usually touch-up paint that we get, that we would have to have a crew go out and paint, if need to be. But I've had towers out for twenty years that have never had been painted.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick question about, so is the, I'm reading the chief's.
Can't hear, sorry, sir.
Sorry. So I was reading the chief's letter. Is he all set? Mike, is he?
Based upon his letter, yeah.
Okay, so I, I see down the bottom, but it's still he has questions. Is it he can't get the truck in, or, or he's not going to get?
I think he's stating, if I remember correctly, that he's not going to get the truck in.
He's not going to get the truck in.
That's the way I understood it.
And is that just a warning? I mean?
I believe his position was that he can get the truck to a position where there are fire agents and other components, so he can bring things for fire suppression, and then he could get people there to administer first aid, but the truck being literally next to the tower, he couldn't do that. But that's not unusual.
And he signed off on it, so I just want to, just wanted to ask the question. And I know the design, the color, that was, we negotiated that early on through discussions, through the town administrator and the select board, and that color was picked, George.
Okay. Well, I was on the way.
Nope, that's right.
Ellen? Mike? Okay, then I'll open it up to any comments or questions from the public? Okay, no comments or questions. I believe we are ready to, we're ready to close. Yes, we have to close the public hearing. So I make a motion that we close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we have the draft decision. So I would make motion, or actually, is there any more discuss, any further discussion on the issue? Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the draft decision, or actually, we need to, we need to make a motion that we grant the special permit with site plan approval for one twenty-one Norfolk Road, construction of the one fifty-foot monopole communications tower, and subject to the condition of verification of the, the bond in the lease agreement and payment through, with the select board.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Mike, do you have a question? Okay, I didn't, you were, I didn't know if you were squinting like me, or if you're frowning, okay. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
I have seen.
Okay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
When do we anticipate the start?
Excuse me?
When do we anticipate starting? Got to get the building ready and all that, but.
Yeah, we, we still have to work with the zoning board on one issue, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have the letter for one forty Dover Road.
That was the one. This is, this is it. Okay, being that it's a few minutes past eight oh five, next item on the agenda is a special permit for site plan approval, public hearing continued for Dover Road Solar LLC.
In accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty A, Section eleven of Mass General Laws, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room two twenty-nine, nine hundred, Main Street, Millis, on the application of Dimitri Tippidis Dover Road Solar LLC, four oh one Edgewater Place Suite five seventy Wakefield, Mass. zero one eight eight zero, requesting a special permit for site plan approval under Section twenty-one, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, and thirteen C of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Millis for installation of a four hundred ninety-eight kilowatt AC ground-mounted solar array on property located at one forty Dover Road, Millis, Mass., Assessor Map fifty-three, Lot zero zero six, property owned by BASF Corporation. A copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. And this has now been continued to Tuesday, July six.
I'm sorry, Mike?
No, we have to make a motion for that. So this is, the, the applicant has requested a continuation of the public hearing without discussion, so I'd make a motion that the public hearing be continued to Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, per the applicant's request.
Second.
At seven fifty P.M.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alrighty, the next item on the agenda is waiver of site plan review approval, request for ten seventy-three Main Street Marijuana cultivation facility, six one seven therapeutic.
It's funny how to look out, in the first four rows are empty, and everybody's like, and everybody's like, I can't hear anything, move up.
Oh, yes, we're, we don't.
Move up.
That's right. Mike, thank you very much.
See you next time.
Bye, Mike, thank you.
Okay, if you could introduce yourself, please.
My name is Ramon Bagio. I'm a designer and a permit expediter. I'm actually flown here from New York after visiting my father, and so California, New York, now Boston. I want to first start by saying this is an existing facility. It's been around now for four years in your town. What we're proposing is nothing more than additional partition walls in the facility so they could put more grow rooms in there. There will be no expansion of exist, of the existing footprint, no changes to the exterior. Again, they've been operating, apparently, from what I understand, with no complaints. There have been no odor issues, there have been no security issues at the site. Does everyone have a set of plans?
Yes.
Okay, so, just to reiterate, any licensing questions? I'm the architect and the permit expediter. Licensing questions, you can ask Bill here. So again, they've been operating, so the proposal is that they'd like to occupy the rest of the building. Right now, it's just a completely open warehouse, and this is not going to be proposed as one large jump into multiple cultivation rooms. They're going to be doing this in phases according to what they can handle financially, so it's not something that they're proposing to just suddenly put in this many grow rooms as per the plan. Now, I understand, having done a few of these, that the concerns of the community are going to be security. Of course, security will be enhanced here, once they put more cultivation rooms in place, and odor mitigation. I have here, and this can be passed around, the enhanced carbon filters that will be in place for each room, and there'll be one more thing they'll be doing that not many cultivation facilities do, which is they're going to be using negative pressure. In other words, when you open the door, the door will suck in. They won't be, they won't be able, there won't be any, able to have the outside air feel the pressure of the actual interior. Speaking about security and my visit there today, everyone is required to come in and check in. Obviously, they have very strict guidelines about who can enter, why they're entering, and then they have to wear special tags. That's why I'm still wearing mine to show you that.
I'll show you mine, this is my agent tag for the building that was given to me by the CCC after, and I'm sorry, my name is Bill Hewson, I'm the head of operations.
You can just speak into the microphone, please, thank you.
I'm sorry that I didn't introduce myself earlier. My name is Bill Hewson, I'm the head of operations for six one seven therapeutic health center. And so this is my CCC card, and by having this and being a registered agent with the state, I'm permitted to allow guests in, once I've identified that they're not, that they're twenty-one years old and are able to enter a facility that deals in cannabis.
And I would have loved to.
And that's true, and I'm sorry, and that's true for any visitor to our property, whether it is a service operator.
Sorry, I don't mean to be picky, just, just nobody else can hear you.
No, you're right. And that includes not just, includes anyone who enters a property, you all have to have an agent license, or you have to be accompanied by somebody with an agent license and wear your visitor's badge, and there are cameras everywhere.
That's pretty much it. That's the reason why we're asking for an exemption for site plan, because we are not doing anything on the site itself.
Okay.
A few questions. First of all, what is the increased number of plants percentage-wise? Are you doubling the amount of plants, or?
Well, in this proposal, it's about quadrupling the amount of plants, but again, it's going to be done in phases. So the first phase would probably just be the far, in your drawing, the first four rooms. Right now, they only have one room.
But the request is for the entire amount?
Correct. But we'll be building it in phases, yes.
And is this the type of?
Filtration that you're using currently for?
Yes.
And we are using negative air pressure currently, which has been very successful.
Jim?
No, Mike will ask it.
Mike?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For the filters, is there a sequence of when you change?
The filters, how often you change them?
They're regularly changed probably after every harvest. So once they start doing the, pulling the plants off, the filters are changed again, yes.
Once, twice, three times a year?
No, more like once a month.
Once a month?
Yes.
And you talk about phases, how long do you anticipate the project lasting through the complete phases?
The reason why we're here today is because we don't want to have to come here again and again and again for it. So this is a master plan of what we expect to do, probably, let's say, over 10 years?
Over 10 years?
Yeah.
10 years?
Yes.
Okay.
It really depends on the economic situation in the next five years and how our business progresses. This will all be built on our business success. And so we can't accurately forecast a timeline. But we cannot say that we're gonna do about a quarter of what we're asking to do in the next six months to a year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Occupant load, since you're the architect, under this use?
209 people, sir.
209 people? So the existing approval for the, I'm sorry, the existing approval for the parking, will that accommodate what the site plan already approved?
Yes, it will, sir.
And the handicap spaces are also figured in that?
Yes, sir.
That number?
Yes, sir.
And handicap bathrooms are also figured in that?
Yes, sir. We're still going to go through the building department process where that will obviously all be verified.
See you then.
Yes.
Thank you.
George?
Um, well, I understand your point with regards to, for your purpose, you don't want, as you say, come back here again and again and again. Considering that this growth could be up to 10 years, I myself am not comfortable with a blanket approval for something that is going to be done in phases over that long a period. Mike?
Question on that?
Yep.
So if this is 10 years and your, your business plan changes, and you decide to throw a wall down the center or to the left or to the right and create another use group, a mixed use in there, say, down the road, then this, this site plan review would have to be, have to come back for that?
Correct, sir.
And that's my concern, if you are, so looking at this map, at this drawing, you, when you said the four rooms, you're referring to the four rooms on the left of the building?
Yes.
Okay. I personally?
Yes, yes.
I am only comfortable with an approval for the four rooms that are being, they're looking to build now. As you've said, Mike, I, over the next 10 years, we don't know, you don't know, nobody knows how things are gonna change. And your design here may not be appropriate five years down the road. It may be. But I would be, I am leery to grant an approval where it's not listed out in phases. It's not, you're not stating, okay, phase one, we want to do these four, phase two, we want to do these three or these five. And have it, have each phase set out specifically to just have a blanket approval that can be, you know, that's just, that's my personal opinion.
I would agree, Madam Chair. There's nothing, you know, there's only bylaw for that zoning district would allow several other uses to be a mixed use with that, knowing that you can put a firewall depending on the, the other use.
That you may, you know, decide to, to separate with, which then would impact your site plan. So I would, I would recommend to the board that you do one thing at a time.
Okay. I think we're open to that. We have to, of course, follow what our, what our, where we are economically before we can move forward to the next phase anyway, but yeah, we'd be comfortable with that.
Anybody else?
You leased the property, correct?
Yes.
So you don't own the, the three feet of grass out in front of the property. So I would ask you, encourage you to get on the owner to, you know, try to clean up the property.
Very good, yes, understood. But we'd be willing to accept that as a condition of approval, that will be only the first four grow rooms.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I would move that we would approve the areas labeled as veg one, grow two, grow three, grow four, dry one, dry two, and dry three.
Are those the appropriate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. For waiver of site plan approval? Second that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Acorn Place Senior, did I just get, no, Acorn Place Senior Resident Community Development, Attorney Kevin Sullivan. That's fine, sir.
That's what I was saying, come on up.
Oh, yes, anyone who has come in since the meeting began, we have a sign-up sheet. I believe it's on the side counter, if you could please sign in.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Sullivan, on behalf of the applicant, I've received word from the applicant that the paving in the parking lot in phase two was done today, and the landscaping in the middle island will be done soon. The remaining, the remainder of the paving will most likely be completed around Labor Day. Oh, yeah, sorry. The remain, the remainder of the paving will likely be completed around Labor Day, and the items under the special permit can't be completed until the paving is done. That is... And I've also been informed that the applicant has been doing work on other items not under the special permit, such as irrigation as well. But that's the update I have for you.
I know you're in the hot seat and haven't been involved in this, but I do have to ask, being that it is the middle of June, why is the paving not gonna be done for another two months?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I, I, there'll be, I, I'm not sure about that, yeah.
I mean, I will defer to the head of our DPW and our, and our building inspector, but this is paving season, and this has been dragged out. I'm sure you're aware that Attorney Cannon is here every month with updates, and not a lot of updates, not that it's Attorney Cannon's fault, but why are we dragging out paving when it is the prime paving season? And because nothing else can be done until the paving starts.
Yeah. Oh, so I'm sorry.
I, I would, and as I said, I understand you may not have the answer, but this board wants to know, as do 20-something people there sitting behind you. And I would prefer not to wait until June, to July, to get an answer for that. I would like us to know, I'd like to have a response from your office. Because thi, this is just, I, I, it just seems crazy to me. Absolutely.
You know, you're saying you're not gonna pay until Labor Day, yet you're requesting an extension till August 30th, and work that can't be done till after the paving is going to be done. That's just ridiculous. These people would like to have their property complete. It's going on a long time, it's absurd. I'm getting tired of hearing about it, actually. I'd like the work to be done.
Thank you, yeah, no, thank you, members of the board, understood. Like I said, I know the paving for the parking lot in phase two was done today, and the only update I have is that the remainder will be done by Labor Day, and I, I can't comment as to why that is. But thank you, and I absolutely understand your concerns.
So Madam Chair, as you know, I've been pretty vocal on this in the last couple of meetings. Maybe it's, the chair should write a letter to, you know, Cannon, Mr. Cannon, with your comments, and we'll have to take it, go forward with that. I mean, we can't, we don't own it, we don't, there's not much we can do about it, as we've been told, and we found out from counsel, that there's not much other than bringing him in every single month to have this discussion. And if it's not going anywhere to our liking, then I think we need to stop putting him in writing. With our concerns.
I agree. George, Mike, do you have any additional comments?
It's, it's a little ridiculous that he hasn't got it. I also noticed on the next one, he's looking for some money, so.
Yeah. Okay, so I would, yeah, I think we want to get out, get a letter out to Attorney Cannon asking for an explanation from your, from your client. Because there's, I mean, I'm in your boat, I'm an attorney, I know nothing, I, you know, I'm the idiot on this board when it comes to the construction end of it, and I know it's, it's paving season. And we have been giving 30-day extensions, 30-day extensions, and as my colleague just pointed out, none of this stuff can be done until the paving's done. And he's, and we have it in writing from, from Attorney.
Yeah, that's the HOA's list.
Oh, okay, so this is, that's, all right, but it's, it's still, most of this stuff can't be done until the paving's done. So I would, we will send a letter to Attorney Cannon, but if you could also let him know in the morning that we are, that this board is very frustrated, and just to, to send you in here blind, which I've been in your spot, so I sympathize with you, don't sympathize with your client. And to be given no explanation as to why paving is gonna be put off for two and a half months. It is just, it's, it's just, it's not acceptable. So we... So the decision is whether we just?
One more question. I'm curious why this attorney was sent here without the basic knowledge of what anyone would assume would be the question, so we were gonna ask. And why are you even here?
I'm sorry, sir? I, I just provided, I just provided you with a, an update. I'll, I'll absolutely relay the board's concerns to Attorney Cannon, but Attorney Cannon was gonna come tonight, but he had a conflict arise. I just told you that the paving for the parking lot in phase two was completed today, and that the landscaping, the middle island, will be completed soon. And the remainder of the paving will be completed around Labor Day. And.
Didn't anticipate that we'd have any further questions.
And the applicant has also been on-site doing additional work, like irrigation, that wasn't, that's not covered under the special permit.
Mike, what happens if, what do we do, what's, what happens if we don't extend tonight? We don't give them another 30 days? Jim? If we don't extend, we've been extending by 30, giving them an extension on the special permit by 30 days. If we don't extend it, that's not gonna change things. Correct?
Well, we'd definitely reach out to the attorney and send a, a letter that is concerning, and I can talk to the developer and see what the issues are, but you know what the issues are. So it's a possibility to do it, so.
It, it's.
I wouldn't be implying a given an extension either. Just as a, just as a, you know, sending a message, look, we're not gonna give you no more extensions, this has to be done as soon as possible. See the sort of law of Accor. I mean, how many extensions have you given already? I'm amazed by my personality.
Five, six.
This is the fifth or sixth.
Five months? Four to five, four to five 30-day extensions. So there have, it's, it's meeting-to-meeting extensions, and the punch list was supposed to be, you know, there was an update with each one, and oh, well, it was too cold.
Are we holding anybody on that?
We don't have any.
No.
No.
No leverage?
No.
Is there a bond? No bond money?
No.
No.
You could extend it to July 16th, then we could send them meeting.
Yeah, so that's the op, the two options are that we extend it to July, to the July meeting. Telling them that both Mr. Fox and Attorney Cannon, that we expect them here, that we want answers, but.
And that maybe August could be the last extension.
Or we can tell them that, that, we can tell them that July's gonna be, that this is their last extension.
We can address it with the next item on the agenda?
No, because they are two different legal entities.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, because each, it's, even though it is the same individual, they're two separate legal entities.
So I, I, I agree with the extension in let Attorney Sullivan go back and apprise his client of our disdain with the, with what's been going on for the residents of this area. And maybe with the hope that, you know, he'll get it done before then, I, I'm.
I mean, can, if you would be so kind as to let your client know that we're, this will most likely be the last extension. And I mean, saying it's unacceptable is clearly, he has no respect, not only does he have no respect for his, for the residents that have lived there, he has no respect for this board either. But this will, my vote will be that this will be the last extension that we will grant. The chair will be back next month, and how he chooses to handle it is up to him. But my recommendation to him, to our chair, and my vote next month will be not to grant another extension. So, and I would, I want to hear from Attorney Cannon as to why, why your client is pushing off paving by two and a half months in the high season of it. That's just, that, there's no logical explanation for it. I underst, you know, I've been told, well, he has medical issues, well, he's not running the, the paving machine. So, okay.
Thank you, yes, I'll, I'll pass on your comments, concerns to Attorney Cannon and my client.
Before I open it up, I have, any other questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Even though he's a developer, he does have a construction supervisor's representative who obtains the permits and is tied into that as well, he could send him here. You could request that if Mr. Fox cannot make a presentation, to have him send his developer and to, to, you know, ask questions where he has boots on the ground every day, you know, regarding the development and regarding, you know, what Mr. Fox is doing, so. I mean, you could put a little pressure on by, you know, requesting that, you know, while he's I-birds, if, if Mr. Fox can't come in, to have his CSL come in and answer some questions.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Perfect, no, I appreciate that, that's a good idea, Mike. Okay, I'm gonna open this up to questions, comments? If you could just state your name and address for the. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sandra Lally, 28 Acorn Place, treasurer of the board. Just want to say that I appreciate all your efforts as a board to put pressure on Mr. Fox. And although he's, seems to be dancing to the tune of his own drummer, we continue to have conversations with him and try to get him to move along. So, we appreciate all your efforts in helping us do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, yeah, I appreciate that. If you could just let him know.
We can still send them there.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we can, we'll send them, I'll tell you, and I can tell everyone we'll send that out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, yes, we.
There's no.
This wasn't a public hearing, though?
No, a motion to extend the special permit.
Oh, 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 you're great, I'm sorry. Thank God I have you. Okay, I make a motion that we extend the special permit until July 16th.
And require Fox and Cannon's presence.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty. Well, Attorney Sullivan, luckily for you, you are back on the hot seat. Okay, being that it's, oh.
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, okay, all right, awesome, we are close. Next on the list is Emerson Place, definitive subdivision bond reduction request.
Good evening again, members of the board. Kevin Sullivan, on behalf of the applicant. The applicant respectfully requests that the board reduce the amount of the performance bond to $837,978. This amount is consistent with the recommendation from the Beta Group in their letter of May 28th, 2024, to this board.
Yes, so unfortunately, because these are both our separate legal entities, we cannot, we cannot address the bond on this. We can't, it can't have any influence from the Acorn Place. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One item handicap ramps. He's cost 3,000, and he requests a reduction of that amount?
But this is what Beta's.
So, so I understand this, right? You can ask him for $18,000 of the reduction of the. Is that correct? Out of the, out of the total?
Out of the total, we'll leave the 18,000, not a reduction of, it will, it's staying, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, so the remaining bond would be, we would retain 837,978 on the bond? Right? Okay, all right. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, George.
Do we know if all this work has actually been done?
Beta has been out.
This is.
Yeah, I must check that, okay.
Yep.
Beta's still inspected, absolutely. So, Madam Chair, if we're all done? Are we done?
Yep.
So, I make a recommendation that we reduce the bond for Emerson Place Phase One estimate, bond reduction to $837,978, with Beta's recommendation and outlined in their, their memo.
Second. Oh, shoot, we didn't, actually, we can't vote on that yet, because I didn't. Were there any questions from the audience? Nope, okay. Sorry about that.
So, so moved.
So moved, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That's it, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Alrighty. No worries, no worries.
Is that something you said, Ronaldo? He emptied the room.
Okay.
That's usually when the DPW gets up to talk about this.
All right, next on the agenda, Rivendale Woods definitive subdivision bond reduction request.
Beta's numbers in your package as well? Everything has been done.
If you could just introduce yourself for the record, please, both of you?
Yeah, Paul D. Simone, Colonial Engineering.
Okay, so we have a letter from Beta Engineering from June 6th, which states that everything has been completed. Beta recommends proceeding with permit closeout and release of the bond held for the subdivision. Septix, okay. Is there any questions from the board? I'm guessing there's no question from the audience. Gentlemen? Okay, so we need a motion to close out?
To reduce the.
To reduce the bond, release the bond?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I make a motion that we release the remaining bond of $163,200. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Is that my seconded?
Yes. And I also make a motion that we, the as-built plans having been approved and accepted, that we close out the permit. Right?
Yep.
The definitive subdivision is complete, so we're closing out that special permit.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I'll get the memo to you soon.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Take care.
May I, you've got the updated as-built with the correct spelling?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I figured, send it to me. I'll make a copy, give it to you.
Oh, wait, that's right, I need a full-size.
What, do you have it by email?
Yes.
I can make them. I'll make them.
Okay. Oh, no, wait, I think I have it. I'll have to check, you may have submitted the revised corrected one, I may be offset.
Okay, just give it to me, and I can make one.
No, I'm pretty sure that we did finally get it. Yes, because this one's correct.
We had it, and you spelled Rivendell's incorrectly.
Oh.
The one that's in your package is the correct.
Is the correct.
And I think I have the hard copy.
Okay.
Okay, other business, discussion of possible bylaw changes for the November town meeting. Section 13, special permit conditions, J, temporary structures. And section seven, signs of illumination. So, we had been discussing amending the temporary structures so that to increase the size of, getting a look.
We talked about whether to have a minimum size that would require.
Right, to require.
And there was also the question whether it would just go to Mike directly versus remaining in the zone by us.
Right, because it, as it stands right now, to get a simple permit, I mean, just to be able to have a tent, say, for a, for a weekend, for a party. Not, not a big.
Fundraisers.
Yeah, a lot of fundraisers that if they have to go through, they may not, a lot of these events may not know in advance, they may not have planned it in advance this far ahead. So, I'm going to, I'm going to let you address that. Right now, we have.
We're going to have you speak on this anyway.
Yes. So, we have structures, so as of right now, the temporary structures, anything over 500 square feet in floor area must apply for a special permit.
So, what do you want to change it to?
Well, either to expand that, or to have, or to require to take out the special permit requirement and just have them come directly to the building department.
Okay, if you take out the special permit requirement, then come directly to the building department, you're going to get the police out of this situation. Whereas a special permit requirement will have all the boards look at it on the application, right? Police, fire, water health, everybody. But if it just goes to the building department, the only, the only mandate to have a tent go to the fire department is if it has sides on it, right? So, they could, somebody could literally, you know, apply for the permit without the sides and not being, going through the routing process, right? I mean, the special permit gives a little more teeth to it where you have these events. And to control those events, so. I know some cities and towns have even expanded on that special permit requirement, such as having an applicant cut a field or water down a field. Because there was a situation where someone drove along the way, they parked their car at the event, and cut the field and the tent on fire. And by the time the fire department got there, and they were notified, it was fully involved. So, they, you know, some of these reasons why we have this that was put in there is to notify, you know, other departments that there's a event. And I do understand that the normal person who's having a graduation party and they have a big tent like that, it's cumbersome, right, and they don't know. And usually what happens is they do it, they don't come and get a permit, and they're done by Sunday, and they knock it down on Monday, we don't even know about it, right? Which, the responsibility lies upon the applicant. If anything ever happens, then you say, well, you're supposed to go get a special permit, and you're supposed to get a building permit, you didn't do that. And your responsibility to know that requirement to do that, so. Then, anything that falls up after that, it falls on the owner. I mean, I talked to Rich about this several times, I sort of agreed but disagreed with him. And I think cities and towns who have this bylaw in it are fortunate to have it to, to prevent and notify it's a special, it's a, it's a public hearing. And everybody, the neighbors, it's not a public hearing when you get a building permit. You just issue the building permit, nobody knows about it, right? And then the tent goes up, they have the party, and people start yelling and screaming when the party's going on, and nobody knows about it. I mean, there's advantages and disadvantages to it. The advantages are the public hearing process, 300 feet around the area, people get notified. Okay, they're going to have a tent, they're going to have a party, this is where they're going to have a wedding. So, everybody knows about it ahead of time. If you don't have that process, it's taken out, because you can apply for a building permit, you issue the building permit, and then you have more havoc, right? From, and more stress is put on police and fire than you would if you had that process. I mean, it was put in there for a reason when they put it in there. I mean, it wasn't done while I was here, it's always been in there, so. I would, you know, I would recommend, you know, that if you want to maybe increase it, to require a special permit to, like, I don't know, 600 square feet, or some, something a little bit larger. And then have the building department control it under that. But I do see a danger in, in, you know, in the process getting obscured, not having the public hearing.
May I just ask a quick question? Because the bylaw states if it's up for a period of more than seven days, and it's over 500 square feet. So, if you change it to 600 square feet and it's up for three days, does it still require a special permit? Because it says for a period of more than seven days.
So.
If it's up for three days and it's 500 or less, it doesn't require a special permit?
Well, in fact, all temporary structures intended to exist for a period of more than seven days, including air-supported buildings, must comply with provisions of Massachusetts Building Code. That's all that says, and then all structures over 500 square feet in floor area must apply to the planning board for a special permit. So.
Is that if they.
So, the seven days.
Well, that's, that's not correct with the building code. The building code is, you put up a temporary structure over 120 square feet, you're required to get a building permit. No days.
Well, that's meeting Massachusetts law.
Yeah, that's, that, that's.
So, that first sentence doesn't even.
No, that doesn't exist in 780 CMI, which is the state building code. 780 CMI gives an exemption of 120 square feet, that you don't need a building permit. And over 120 square feet, including temporary structures, you do.
Okay, so that.
So, I might have it up for a day.
All right, so this, this first sentence doesn't even, is irrelevant?
Yeah, that, that should be removed.
That first sentence, so there doesn't matter about a time period?
No. Because the building code is mandated. No time, you can have it up before you come for a building permit, that's not how it works.
Because my only concern is, a lot of times, if somebody's doing a fundraiser, it's short notice, where the planning board meets once a month, and application takes four weeks to process after it's filed with the town clerk. And then there are fees involved. There's a $350 fee, there's a certified a butter list fee. And then it just requires, I'd say, like, two months to get a special permit approved for a tent from start to finish. And then it has to be a 20-day appeal period after the decision is filed, recorded at the registry of deeds, like all special permits.
Yeah, maybe there, maybe there's something that we could bring, you know, have town council look at to modify it, to, so, that's not.
That's what, yeah.
And leave it in as a.
So, not that it's so strict.
Right, it's very cumbersome, time-consuming, and expensive for somebody who's doing a wedding. I mean, they don't have another $500 to.
Right.
Well, it's not even that, but I mean, if you're doing a wedding, presumably, you've, you've planned that months in advance, it's for the
people that are doing a birthday party for their kids and are finding out a week, or, I mean, you're doing a birthday party, a graduation party, and you're finding out on Tuesday, it's going to rain Saturday. And they call, you know, you call somewhere and you get a tent.
You go to a state job lot and buy a 10 by 20 canopy, you need a permit, right?
Right, and, you know, or people that just, you know, have it say, okay, I'm having the kid, you know, I'm, we're just having the neighbors over, and it's going to be hot, so let's just put up the tent. So, that's not, and I totally agree with you, ignorance of the law is no excuse. But, you know, as Camille was saying, this is hugely cumbersome for something that is.
Could we kick it back to the, you know, send something to town council to see if there's anything else in there that's not as restrictive as that, where it could require something that would trigger everyone to look at it? You know, so it, you know, somebody can't say, well, the building code, and you have to give me a building permit, I don't have to go to the police department, I don't have to go to the fire department because I don't have, you know, sides on the tent. You know, why, you know, they could, they could make a situation. they could make a situation out of that. Um, is there something, maybe some other city in town has that is not so involved that addresses some of the...
Yeah, we could leave this in for over, we could retain the special permit process for over a certain size.
Right.
And under a certain size...
A simpler process like what we do for our fire permits, is just go to the fire department, give them five bucks, there's your permit, they hand you the rules. So, how about a tent permit? Go to the building department, give them 20 bucks, whatever, you hand them the rules, and it's not...
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we could...
Maybe you could have some sort of process in the zoning bylaws.
Right.
To say that, okay, if you want to put up this tent, well, we don't require a, a public hearing or a special permit process. However, you are required to notify the police department, the fire department, border health, be sent prior to you obtaining a building permit, right? They could put that and something like that in the zoning bylaws, whereas the building official can point to say, hey, this is a zoning bylaw, before I give you the permit, did you go to the fire department? Did you go to the police department? Did you go to the border health? And, and then you can use that as a tool, right? Instead of holding them up for the public hearing or, or whatnot. Cause that usually, what happens is if, if there's a tent put up and there's, you know, some issues going on, people call, call the police department, the fire department right away, they don't know anything about it. So, the, the main goal here is to steer them prior, you know, and, and make sure they're aware of it and what kind of function they're, you know, they're gonna have. Are they gonna block the streets? There's gonna be an issue for the fire department to get apparatus to there if there's a medical issue, not finding out while it's going on, right? Just like, same thing with the, you know, the solar on the roof. I send everything over to the chief before I give him a permit. So, he has a running list of who has solar panels on their house. Just in case there is a fire, he can say, okay, they can look on his iPad thing and say, there's a solar panel, the firemen can see that they, on their way there, they can find that out. Without, you know, something of that nature, you know what I mean? So, I think there's something we can work out, it's just...
Yeah, we can, we can ask town council.
And see, yeah, see if any other towns have, I know there are a few other building officials that I talked with who, you know, that they've had issues, uh, and problems arising with these big tents. And, and even with some people having graduation parties that get out of hand. And, um, you know, the police department, fire department don't know about it. And, and, you know, they issued a permit, a tent permit, which, we could have some mechanism inside the, you know, the zoning bylaw to, to force them to go there, to notify them, to have them simple sign off on an application. Right? So, you guys are notified, you know, that they're having it this day, you know, without going through this process, yeah.
Right. Okay, I can check with Jay on that. And then the, the other bylaw discussion had to do with illumination of signs. What was...
Well, that all came up during the mobile.
Yeah.
As you can see, mobile, they took, they painted everything, everything's gone. They took the mobile off, they painted it white, they painted, took the colors down. It's back to what it looked like.
Hey. How's that?
I mean, maybe just have the four, uh, whatever ideas they want, and then...
Well, that's...
I mean, cause I know Rich had some ideas about certain signs and...
We talked a little bit about, uh, we talked a little bit about the temporary signs.
That's, yeah, that was part of it, was these temporary signs that are, like the flag signs that could put up?
Oh.
That are then left for months.
Oh, well, they're, they're, um, banner signs. The only, the only allowable banner signs is grand opening signs. If they, they put up signs, then somebody needs to file a complaint, the building department, fill out the form, fill out the complaint, and then we'll go after them and have the banner signs removed.
Is that what the, the flat, the just, the one...
Yeah, they stick them in the ground, and yeah, that's a banner sign.
Okay.
So, the only banner signs allowed technically in the town of Milis is a banner sign for, prior to, uh, what do they call it? Opening.
Yeah, grand opening.
Grand opening, that's it, right? That's allowed, banner signs allowed for grand opening. They have to, um, the, the applicant would, would need to tell the building official, we want a, a grand opening banner sign for 14 days, these are the days, and then we're gonna take it down for a week, and then we need it for another 14 days. So...
Yeah, I mean, we've got businesses that have had them up for months.
Yeah, it's, I, I can't chase, I can't chase them. So, I don't have the staff to chase them.
Right.
So, what we do occasionally, we'll go around, pick them all up, dump them at the back, and Michael will call them up and either come pick them up or we're gonna throw them away.
They land up in the back of the building department in a big pile, and then we, and somebody says, where's my sign? It's over here, come and get it. By the way, you need a sign permit, right? Well, I paid 4, 50 bucks for that sign, we'll get a sign permit.
Right.
I give it back to you, so, but, usually that's what happens.
Well, even if we... So, it's an odd matter of putting something in because it's already rule in the building code.
Yeah, it's just, it, um...
It's an enforcement issue.
It's an enforcement issue where, when you tell somebody, or somebody calls it, it's a banner sign, uh, well, please fill out the form or send an email with your name and, and your address, cause it's, it's part of the, you know, the zoning requirement. When you, um, file a complaint for a zoning infringement, we need to have your, you know, they, you have to put your money where you're melted, you have to sign and date it. So, cause it gives, it starts the 14-day run of the clock, when that's why we need to date, then we stamp it in, say, okay, now we got 14 days to act. The building official doesn't want to act, then it goes to the ZVA. So, that person who's complaining can take that complaint and go to the ZVA, if the building official declares that I don't want to act because. And that's why we have that process, right? So, how many times I drive by them and if I start doing that, then everything is gonna have to, you know...
Okay. Anything else?
Alrighty, um, so, so everybody read and reviewed the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of June 14th.
Second.
May 14th. Today's June 11th, so June 14th isn't coming on yet.
I abstained, cause I wasn't here.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me.
July, if we just send an August meeting without the July meeting set, would we revise any of August's?
So, our July meeting is set for the 16th. So, for August...
I cannot do the 13th of August.
You can't do the 13th, okay. Um, so that would give us the 6th or the 20th?
Let's do the 6th.
6th? Does that work for everybody else?
Yeah.
Excuse me, okay.
Do you want me to keep this on the agenda to discuss the bylaws? Do you want to continue here with discussions?
Yeah. Yeah, cause if we want to...
It has to do, it would have to be for the...
If we can get, yeah, yeah, we want, yeah, we want to at least be able to find out what, what town council says.
You can send an email to Jay.
Yeah.
You or me? We'll talk.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Uh, don't go anywhere, you have to sign the decision.